Welcome to the Progress Texas Happy Hour.
Welcome to the Progress Texas Happy Hour. I'm advocacy manager Reagan Stone. The State Board of Education sets policies and standards for Texas public schools. Primarily that's curriculum, adopting instructional materials, establishing graduation requirements, managing the permanent school fund, as well as responsibilities surrounding new charter schools. The SBOE meets quarterly in Austin, and that next meeting is June 24th through June 27th. That's this month, y'all. If you're like me and wondering really what they do? What's at stake for your neighborhood school or the priorities of your elected officials? Well, you're in luck. Today, we're bringing a firsthand look into the inner workings of your state board of education. First up, District Three State Board of Education member, Marissa Perez Diaz. Marissa represents a district that covers San Antonio, southeast Taguoliad, and all the way down to a section of the Rio Grande Valley. She's the most senior Democrat on the board in her fourth term. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology from UT Austin-Huckham, and is currently pursuing a doctoral degree in educational leadership from UTSA. Go Roadrunners. We're excited to have you join the podcast. Welcome, Marissa Perez Diaz.
Thank you. I'm so excited to join you all today, and I'm excited to help answer any questions you all have about the state board. I've been on here for quite some time.
Awesome. And I loved getting to know you a little bit at the beginning. Marissa, I'm pretty certain this is your first time on the pod, so please do correct me if I'm wrong. But more so, can you tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you chose to run for the board seat?
Yeah, definitely. So I am born and raised in San Antonio. I'm the oldest of four, first time, first generation college student, and I'm a product of public education from K through my doctoral program. So I am all about public ed and really understanding what it is to grow up in a system and want to get back to it. I did start my career in child welfare as a Child Protective Services caseworker. Had a lot of experiences in schools, and there was one incident in particular that really kind of threw me over the edge. I always explained that I was moved by anger to run for public office, and I'm glad that I didn't know a lot about all of the ins and outs in serving in public office, from being honest, because I think they may have been scared away of it. But I decided to run when I was 26, and it was through a lot of soul searching and just trying to understand where I can make a difference, where it mattered. And so ran a very, very grassroots campaign against an incumbent. And 12 years later, here I am, serving as your District Three State Board of Education member. So very, very tight way of explaining 12 years of service on the board, but I'm happy. I know we're going to jump into lots of questions, but yeah. And then, yes, I'm a Roadrunner and a Longhorn. I bleed orange forever.
Awesome. Different shades of orange sometimes, but definitely the same color. And of course, thank you, of course, I'll note, the dean, one of the deans of the State Board of Education. Thank you again for being here. Next on the docket, we have Rosio Ferero Perez. She's the political director with the Texas Freedom Network. She and those at TFN work to preserve true religious freedom and church-state separation, including supporting a well-funded, equitable, and honest public education system. Thank you for joining us, Rosio.
Yeah, I'm so excited to be here with you all today. Work very closely with Marissa and the work that we do at the State Board of Education, and really excited to dive into, you know, what happens at the SBOE and how we're involved as TFN.
Well, before we get too deep, Rosio, will you tell us a little bit more about what you and all the fine folks at TFN do, and you know, how your work mingles with the State Board of Education?
Yeah, well, you know, I would love to talk a little bit about the lore of TFN. So I don't know how familiar you are with TFN, but we were actually founded in response to the SBOE. Back in, you know, the last time there was a statewide Democrat elected in Texas was Governor Ann Richards, right? And when she lost her reelection to George Bush, her daughter Cecile Richards, another Texas giant, famously went to an SBOE meeting. And one of my favorite stories was them debating the image of a woman holding a briefcase as she's going on her way to work, waving to her family. And, you know, it was seen as not the right message to send to girls. And Cecile was at an SBOE meeting and wrote down on a piece of paper, you know, "It's worse than I imagined." And then she founded TFN. And so TFN has been around since 1995 to push back against the weaponization of religion in the SBOE and in other work that we do in elections and at the legislature. So we work hand in hand with champions like Marissa at the SBOE when it comes to science, health, sex education, social studies, all of the issues that we're going to talk about today. And so we mobilize people across the state. So we serve to monitor and ring the alarm bell whenever things are happening that parents and community members across the state should be aware about. And so that's part of our role, is, you know, mobilizing the community and getting them engaged to testify at the SBOE and the local school boards, so that they know what is happening, what their kids are learning in school, and happy to be a part of this conversation here today.
Awesome. Thank you for being here, Rosio. I also want to give a special shout out to Emelda, as well as Marty Byer, who helped connect us all here today. So big shout out to TFN, and of course, thank you for all of Texas Freedom Network's amazing work as well. Marissa, I'm looking for a bit deeper understanding of the State Board of Education. More than my plagiarized, copied introduction, I don't know, we don't have any teachers on here today, so hopefully, you know, you forgive me for that, from stealing that from y'all's website. But will you share with us, what does the SBOE do in your words? And how does your work, you know, affect local school boards, parents, teachers, students?
Yeah, definitely. So the State Board of Education is a governing body of 15 elected members from across the state. So each one of us have a geographically very diverse region that we cover. However, within each one of our districts, we represent about 1.5, 1.6 million people each. And within my own district, I cover 14 counties, roughly 98 to 102 school districts and public charter schools, and that's just my single district.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
So we do run on partisan lines. So Democrat, Republican, right now, the board, for most of the board's history, as it's been an elected body, has obviously been overwhelmingly Republican. So we sit at five Democrats, 10 Republicans right now. And the responsibility of the board, we have, you know, you did a great job of sort of summarizing. We're responsible for, I always bucket into three major things. Number one, the review, approval, and implementation of our Texas essential knowledge and skills. So the standards our students are learning are expected to learn from kindergarten through the 12th grade. Along those same lines, the second major responsibility is the review, approval, and implementation process of instructional materials. And so those instructional materials are typically aligned to the standards that have been approved. And so second major responsibility. The third is the investment of the permanent school fund, which is the largest education endowment in the country. We're sitting at about $56 billion right now. Those, the corpus of those dollars were built on mineral, mineral and land rights. And so we invest the corpus of those funds, and the return on that investment, the interest earned on that investment then is turned over every biennium to the legislature. The legislature then decides how they're going to allocate those dollars. I always also explain that in a perfect world, 100% of the dollars that we turn over to the legislature should go back to public education. In reality, that never happens. Typically, it's about 50%, and then the other 50% goes to wherever, wherever else the legislature at the time feels those dollars need to be directed. In addition to that, we do also have veto power over commissioners' recommendations for charter schools. And then the oversight of training and governance for local school boards. So that's sort of our connection to local school boards. We don't oversee the actual governing structures or those governing bodies. We don't, it's kind of a misnomer, but we don't have anything to do with the STAR exam. We get a lot of those questions around testing and accountability, and unfortunately, we don't. Fortunately and unfortunately, the State Board of Education doesn't touch that. But we do interact in terms of, you know, when we're looking at requirements for school boards, we oversee what those training requirements look like, and we make recommendations for what they should be trained on. We also get every once in a while, some engagement with the teacher, the State Board for Teacher Certification, so they'll make recommendations around what sort of certifications should be offered, what platforms to be used. And then we have some say on what processes and procedures should be, should look like, and make those recommendations to the State Board for Educator Certification.
Well, very good, very good. Thank you for laying that all out for us. And I think now we're kind of, we're diving even further, deeper here. Rosio, we've seen a lot surrounding education in the past legislative sessions. Obviously, the last two have talked quite a bit on the private school voucher scam, which we all know has passed, but also hot topics in public schools, like the unconstitutional move to hang the Ten Commandments on the wall in each classroom, as well as school-sponsored prayer, book bans, I could go on and on. While some of this call for indoctrination, in my words, primarily hangs out in the Capitol in Austin, as well as at local school boards. In your opinion, has the SBOE always been this politically divisive? And is it more extreme now than in the past?
Um, you know, I would say it has always been politically divisive. I want to think back to, you know, when the far-right really took over the SBOE was in 1992, right? That's when you had some of the most outrageous members join the board. I don't know if you know who I'm talking about, Marissa. I'm thinking about Don McElroy, Gail Lowe. These are some folks that were appointed right by the governor. Back then, in 2007, it was Rick Perry. He appointed these creationists to the board and to chair the board. And I think chairing the board is a really huge responsibility, right? So when we're thinking about how long the SBOE has been politically divisive, at least for the last 30 years, right? Ever since, it's, the Republicans have had a stronghold at the SBOE and in the legislature, both in the House and in the Senate. And it's been politically divisive in so many different areas. You see that with the evolution debate. I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with the documentary called The Revisionaries, that stars TFN and follows the State Board of Education, where Don McElroy was the chair. And you can look at the documentary, and he's literally telling people that the Earth is 6,000 years old and that dinosaurs were on Noah's Ark. He's also famously quoted saying that, you know, "Public education is too important not to be politicized." And that is a clear representation of what it's been like for the last 30 years. But I believe that back in, I think it was 2012, there was a shift kind of back to the center when some Republicans were primaried and for being too far right, and then others that retired. So back in 2012 and in the 2010s, you had some curriculum that was passed, like the Mexican-American Studies courses, the African-American Studies courses. And then in 2022 and 2024, it took another sharp turn back to the right, when you have some people that are not moderate by any means, like Pat Hardy, that were primaried for not being right enough and not bending the knee to whatever it is that the governor wanted, and some of these far-right extremists, and they were primaried. And so now we shifted far back to the right again, but it has historically been very divisive, even when Democrats were in charge or had more say at the SBOE, it was still very conservative.
And, you know, that really strikes me, of course, just noting kind of a cycle that we're noticing here too. But also, now that we're shifting back to obviously a Republican, more extreme board, or rather, just government in general, I'm thinking attacking DEI and other vulnerable groups that attend our public schools. I mean, I used to think education, public schools, they're our great equalizer. But you also gave me a really good segue into our next question here. Marissa, I'm a former council member, and so I know the schedules for public meetings can, you know, sometimes be boring to a common bystander, but also they can get heated, right? What have you fought to either defend in public schools, or maybe on the counter, to counter the board's Republican majority? And maybe you can start off by telling me about what happened with the science textbook rejection in 2022, and how that might preview what we could see with social studies coming up?
Yeah. Oh, man, making me jog my memory. I have slept since then. No, well, actually, if you, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to go back just a little bit, because I think, Rosio did a really good job contextualizing, I think, some of what we've seen over the years, right? And it's funny, because I was part of the, in 2012, I was part of this shift. I came on with, it was a mass shift after, after the census, to bring on new members. So like, half of the board was wiped clean, and I came in with that rolling, with that rollout of new members. And so it was really interesting, because to Rosio's point, it's, for as long as I've been on the board, it's a very conservative board. And I'll say, you know, in 1984, the board became an elected board. It shifted from an appointed body to an elected body. I think once that shift was made, that introduces divisiveness, right? Because you no longer have a governor appointing like-minded individuals. Now you have citizens who are voting their conscience, they're voting the people and who are like-minded with them. And so with that, it will come diversity of thought and introduces new characters, new, you know, new ideas to the conversation. It did, obviously, because of how Texas is made up, went very conservative. With me rolling on with these board members, we started to see a shift in the right direction, right? Change is slow, and that is one thing I learned as a young politician. Like, I was coming in, ready to make the change, and like, we're going to burn the house down and build it right back up, and that's not reality, right? And so change is gradual, but it was happening, and it was happening in the right direction, which was really exciting. And then we saw the introduction of, you know, what happened in 2016 sort of shifted everything. And so following, following the first Trump administration, we saw an introduction of more extreme right board members. And so what I'll say, now I'm seeing on the board, which is a really interesting dynamic, the far-right, I mean, and I won't even call them far-right, I'll say the Trump, the Trump, you know.
MAGA, MAGA, whatever you want to say, yeah.
That are on the board now, have created strange bedfellows on the board. There are people who, you know, with whom I would have never, like, thought that we would be working together against another Republican on, right? And so for the sake of maintaining that, that relationship, I won't name these members, right? But I will tell you, I'm having more success working with some of my colleagues across the aisle, just because the others are so, they're just so far off on the extreme that they're frustrating. They're pissing people off in their own party, right? And so they're forcing us to work together, which has been a benefit, right? Because as a Democrat on the body, as a Democrat on the board, it's difficult, right? You have to work twice as hard, three times as hard, to garner the support that you need on some of these votes. And when you can negotiate, because they need you against somebody else on their side, puts a lot of power back into the Democratic Party, the Democratic faction on the board that we didn't, you wouldn't necessarily know exists if you weren't part of the politicking internally. So just wanted to lay that context out, right? Because it's been an interesting shift that I've seen and felt internally.
And the same thing, I'll just note with primaries, you know, of course, you're going to get some very far-right candidates, some that, like you said, might not necessarily even have their community's voice in mind. But, but yeah, you were getting ready to tell us a bit more about the science textbooks and, you know, how that intertwines with all of our curriculum.
Yeah, so unfortunately, because we still swing very conservative, there are ideas about creationism versus evolution, and what really, what truly students need to be learning, right? And you have these conversations about indoctrination and, you know, brainwashing and, you know, introducing theories. And I think what we tend to lose sight of is that we have practitioners, and there is research and peer-reviewed research that supports, you know, some of what we're trying to implement in standards. And unfortunately, with the science textbooks, people just didn't appreciate the fact that there was too much evolution, right? There was too much talking about climate change in particular. That was really huge, right? People don't want to talk about the fact that, you know, the reality is humans impact climate change. We are making it worse, and we don't want to acknowledge that, because the state that we live in is one of the primary perpetrators of, right? You know, the causing the warming with all of our drilling that we do here. Oil is a huge resource in Texas, and so there are particular lobbyists that actively work the State Board of Education, and you would never know, work us, because they have special interests, right? They don't want kids knowing that fracking hurts the environment. They don't want kids to know that, you know, what enriches Texas, you know, Texas's capitalism is also hurting the environment and causing, you know, causing mass environmental shifts, right? In temperature and climate. And so those sorts of conversations are what derailed the adoption of really solid, you know, some of the most solid textbooks that we were expecting to see in a very long time. That happens, and that's sort of rolled into the culture war conversations we see all the time. You know, one of the, one of the things I'm most proud of in all of my years on this board is seeing the approval and implementation of Mexican-American Studies and African-American Studies as courses are offered for graduation, that to graduation requirements in the electives, as an elective course. That was a hard fought. It took us almost, almost five years to see Mexican-American Studies come to fruition in a state where 52% of the student population identifies as Latino, a majority of which are Mexican-American. That is just one, you know, that's one fight, right? And so for me, it's like inclusivity. I joined, like, I chose to run for the State Board of Education because I was moved by, I was moved by anger, as I mentioned earlier, to want to, I want to be, I want to be able to help individuals who don't have the platform that I have, right? I want to be a voice for the people who aren't heard, right, who are forgotten, who aren't recognized. And, and for me, that work is important, right? There's tons of research to support that when students see themselves, or they can relate to this, get to the curriculum, they can relate to the materials that are in front of them, they're that much more invested in their education. For me, that's so important, and it's kind of lost. And that goes for any, any one of our content areas.
Yeah, and I can definitely see how, you know, someone, or the fact that much of Texas, the majority of Texas, has Mexican-American heritage. And so being able to see someone like you talked about in your textbook, in your curriculum, being able to, you know, dive deeper into your family history, or your family tree, or your heritage. These are things that we would think that are Texan by nature, of course, and that, of course, the diversity and the strength of our state and our country are directly related back to that too.
Progress Texas Podcasting Director Chris Mojer here. Independent, public, fact-based media is under direct attack by the Trump administration and congressional Republicans. Why? Because we dare to speak truth to power. We don't fire our staff members for expressing their own views. We don't shy away from what's really happening out of fear. As we all know, information is power, and once the truth is silenced, we're all powerless. Progress Texas relies on funding from our listeners and viewers to keep shining a light on the truth in Texas. If you've come to rely on Progress Texas, please support us. We don't do subscriptions or paywalls, because the media we produce is important for everyone to be able to see and hear, but it can't continue without you. Please become a regular, sustaining, monthly supporter of Progress Texas right now at progresstexas.org/donate.
I think we all know by now, of course, you, Marissa, and the entire 15-member board are elected positions, although sometimes not necessarily, you know, the most talked about elections, of course, either. Of course, with that, candidates or members, they have to raise funds, they have to post planks, they have to do all the things you have to do with running for office. Well, coming with that also, you have to do a lot of fundraising, money, money, money. Rosio, how has money from wealthy donors been a factor in increasing polarization, ultimately creating this extremist control that we're seeing right now?
Yeah, you know, it's true when they say money talks, and it talks a lot in Texas. You know, for years, the SBOE was just this sleepy corner of state government that a lot of people didn't pay attention to, but that changed. I'm thinking of James Lineger, a wealthy San Antonio businessman that was bankrolling campaigns to elect religious right candidates in the 90s. These days, his influence has faded, but now we're seeing massive funding come from charter school interests and ultra-conservative donors who want to privatize public education, the way we talked earlier about the passing of the school vouchers and shifting a lot of money away from public education to private and religious schools. And, you know, they even ousted, like, said Republicans who weren't far right enough. And these wealthy donors have a huge sway on the education of Texas. And something we haven't touched on a lot, but I think is important to note, is that Texas is such a huge market that the textbooks, the textbooks that get adopted in Texas get distributed all around the country. And so these donors, these funders, people that are invested in these textbooks that are bankrolling a lot of the members' campaigns, have an influence on what children all across this country are learning, not just in Texas. And that is a massive responsibility on the board and a massive influence from people that have no place in public schools.
Yeah, I couldn't say that better myself. It's obvious that in, you know, some ultra, ultra wealthy individuals, those with obviously concerns that are not aligned with students or their education or the betterment of them, they see definitely an opportunity in being able to affect future generations in Texas, but also in a lot of other states too. You know, obviously, kind of an example of that, Marissa, last fall, the board pushed a Bible-infused elementary curriculum. And, you know, while some folks might think that, you know, learning a lesson from the Bible might be helpful to people, but I don't see, you know, of course, the Torah, or the Quran, or any other religious texts being used here. In your view, what are, you know, perhaps maybe the most important issues that are coming up in this next meeting or this next year? And maybe, you know, of course, give us kind of a preview of what's coming up, noting that that's kind of where we were at some of our last meetings.
Yeah, definitely. So I think what I'll, so to provide context for where that Bible-infused curriculum came from, in the, not this last legislative session, but the one prior, we had House Bill 1605 come through. And this piece of legislation essentially came in and exploded what used to be a pretty solid instructional materials process, review process for the State Board of Education. We would bring in subject matter experts, educators, higher ed to come in. They would review our materials, let us know what's age-appropriate, what's pedagogically appropriate, you know, sequencing. What does all of this look like? And with the introduction of 1605, that created an entirely new process where the Commissioner of Education and the Texas Education Agency essentially commandeered the process prior to it coming to the state. prior to it coming to the State Board of Education. And so you'll hear the commissioner often in meetings say, oh, well, this is the state board's process and now you all are owning it fully, which is not accurate at all. Um, and essentially what we're receiving is a vetted, um, vetted by the Commissioner of Education himself and, and the Texas Education Agency and the staff. Um, they're vetting instructional materials before the board ever gets to see anything. By the time the board gets, gets to see any kind of instructional materials, it's what's, it's what's been siphoned through and considered already appropriate for us to look at. And so I want to make that very clear and we've talked about it in, in public forums, but um, but I just have to reiterate that. And so where we got to this um Bible-infused um curriculum and all of this was, was introduction from the Commissioner of Education, um, you know, letting us know these books are appropriate. Tell us what it is. And then utilizing these sorts of biblical stories as um, you know, teaching, uh, teaching theory, teaching concept, teaching all kinds of things. And so I think when we've had conversations around that, like, my point of view is you can, like, the golden rule is the golden rule. Treat others as you want to be treated, and that is reflective in all religions, right? Um, so, so why is it necessary to show favoritism over, you know, of, of one religion over the others? Now, the argument is that other religions are referenced in instructional materials and in the curriculum, and, and that's true, but it's overwhelmingly Christian-based. And so when we do that, like, the, the problem is, like, not every child in Texas is Christian, right? Prior to this last election cycle, not every board member on the State Board of Education was Christian, right? Like, you, you have to be able to educate in a way that doesn't alienate individuals, that doesn't introduce religious theory, right? I think the really interesting dichotomy about this argument, right, is there, you know, you want, you want students not to have the introduction of things like DEI and we don't want to, you know, talk about the scary CRT that doesn't exist in K-12 education, by the way. Um, because those concepts are, you know, are not things that we want educators to be introducing to our kids. That's our responsibility. Well, I would argue as a, as a Catholic Christian, I don't want anybody teaching my kids religion. Like, that's my responsibility at home as a parent. So why would I want public education to be responsible for that? I can't understand the, how, how they um, how they're rationalizing that, right? And, but that's the argument, right, is, well, these biblical stories teach all of these values that we want our kids to learn. You don't have to do it through religion, right? Um, and so because of this process, right? And, and now that the Texas Education Agency, along with the Commissioner, are vetting prior to the State Board of Education ever reviewing, like, all of the materials that come to us, we're going to see this sort of problem happen in every core content area um because we're still building a process for how we do it. And that's the really hard part. The other thing is, we were on an eight-to-10-year cycle of reviewing instructional materials because it's time-intensive, it's costly to school districts to have to, you know, revamp all of their materials. Um, and now with the introduction of this legislation, if some board member grows a wild hair and last year we did science, but this year they don't like something that's in the science standards, then I can, I can request that we reopen the instructional materials for science. And now all of these publishers are going to have to come back to us and introduce new material or updated material. So that's going to be a ton of money for school districts. And the other interesting factor in this is that Texas Education Agency is also a publisher in this process. And they have the ability to switch up, you know, they're, they're getting the same guidance that we would be giving all the other publishers. However, this legislation allows school districts who purchase from TDA to get more, more dollars. So school districts are incentivized to purchase the materials that TDA is creating, which puts them at a, at a disadvantage, right? And I don't understand how this was even, I don't even know how this was legal, right? It, it's so, there's, it's such a conflict of interest. Um, but it happened. And so there's, the 1605 is just a big mess. It's created a, a lot of problems for us. And so next up right now is, we're looking at math and we're going to be looking at social studies standards. Um, and the problem with the social studies standards is here's the introduction of all of the culture war conversations you could ever imagine. Um, we're going to have to start talking about the framework and who goes in and who goes out, what cultures are represented and what cultures aren't, right? And um, you know, what points in time, what, you know, historical incidents are going to be acknowledged and which are going to fall by the wayside. Those things are going to have to start happening um in the, in the context of not, not fully getting to see all of the instructional materials that are coming to us for the process. The Commissioner of Education is going to sift through all of that before we ever see, you know, all of the options.
Yeah, and so you're kind of getting lined up with something that's already been, uh, I might say watered down or uh given a, uh, definitely, um, you know, there's some interest going behind what, what they want to present you. That is really good to know, um, and definitely, I think our audience is, is um probably hearing that for the first time, unless they've come and seen you, of course. Uh, but, you know, I think circling back, uh, Rosio, in this question, we kind of can get an understanding of why it's set up this way. Uh, in my personal view, our state leadership loves gerrymandering. Um, you know, in other words, that's creating districts that are more favorable to one party. Um, they often look pretty weird on a map and point being, Marissa's district is 250 miles in length. And I know Texas is big, but my goodness. Uh, my question is, given the gerrymandering challenges we face, what can concerned citizens actually do to influence the board? And, you know, kind of in a partisan way, looking forward, do Democrats have much of a chance to win control of the SBOE?
You know, I'm a relentless optimist and I will say that it's going to be tough, right? Uh, but we're in it. Uh, SBOE districts, like you said, are heavily gerrymandered, just like our state, house and senate districts. Um, every redistricting cycle, we see that. Uh, so Democrats are locked into the minority, like Marissa has already said, five to 15, there's 15 members and five and 10 on the board. Um, but we've seen in the past with public backlash growing, um, we've seen, including Republicans, when the board gets really extreme, them pushing back. That's what happened in 2012, like Marissa said, when she came on to the board. And so we're going to continue to work on shining a light on what is happening to everyday Texans to make sure that they know what is happening in their kids' classrooms and why they should get involved. And for your question of, is there anything they can do? There is a lot that folks can do to get involved, so much. All of these different things have a major impact on this curriculum, on the board. And, you know, you can pay attention to these SBOE meetings, show up, testify at the hearings, talk to your local school boards, to your lawmakers at the, the state, at the legislature that influence a lot of what happens at the SBOE. Um, you know, it's really important for people to inform their community, their family, um, people in their district. So the board may seem, you know, far removed for a lot of folks, uh, but their decisions affect your kids, your nieces and nephews every single day, not just today, but for generations, right? These textbooks take sometimes seven to 10 years before they come back to it. And so it's going to really have a, a major impact, like I said, not just on Texas kids, but kids around the country. And this forms their identities and informs the way that they see the world. And when people speak up loudly and persistently, the way we have as TFN for the last 30 years, it makes a difference. And it's, it's been done before and we know that we can do it again.
Very good, very good. Marissa, please close us out. Of course, we got a statewide audience here, but also more specifically to your constituents, where can they find out more about you and the work that the board's doing, but also let you know what they think?
Yeah, so my, my information, you can find my information on the Texas State Board of Education website. Um, I, I am easily accessible, you can email me. Um, my information, again, is, is on that, is on the site. Um, and I would say, you know, uh, we, first and foremost, please, uh, give me some grace. We get hundreds and hundreds of emails a week, so it's a lot to go through and we don't have a staff. But, you know, but this work is incredibly important. And so um I will say, please always just voice your, voice your interest, voice your opinion. I'm always looking for practitioners to serve on, um, on our panels, on our, uh, on our review panels. It's, it's helpful, especially people who are currently in the work that understand, right? I love having um people who, who are in the weeds and who understand and see the impact every day of the policies that we're making, right? Because that's where the rubber meets the road. Um, the other thing I'll say, if I can, if I can just really quickly add, you know, what Rosio said was absolutely on point. I think also, you know, one of the things that we can actively do is, um, I, I will say I see it and I don't want to speak generally, right? But I feel it because it's around me, right? In, in people my age and in my generation, there is an apathy, right? There, I think there's a, a sense of like, I'm not going to vote because what is it going to do? Like, it just, it's exhausting, it doesn't feel like it matters. It, it truly does, right? And so fight that apathy, right? Find your friends, grab a brother, grab a sister who isn't voting, let them know, like, hey, it's really important because the more people that do it, like, we will collectively, we will collectively raise that tide, right? Together, and that has to happen. The other thing I will say is provide platforms for young people because while I feel it, even as an elected official myself, sometimes it can be really disheartening. I find so much hope and optimism in looking at these younger generations, right? Gen Z, like, I've never seen as much excitement around engagement and asking questions and mobilization. Um, right? And, and that's, there's power in that, right? Gen Alpha, get them young, right? Start talking to them about getting involved, right? Um, but provide, provide young people who can't yet vote platforms to have those conversations because you will start building, you will start building your, your foundation for our next generation of progressive thinkers, right? Of critical, it's not even about being progressive, it's about being a critical thinker, right? Think for yourself, have, have, worse, right? Be able to create, have conversations with people that don't agree with you and come to, come to an understanding, right? That doesn't exist, it doesn't feel like it exists anymore. People are just so ready to fight each other. And policy doesn't happen without collaboration, policy doesn't happen without negotiation, we know that. And so encouraging young people and teaching them from a very young age that, that it's their right and it's their duty to have those discussions, um, I think will, will set us on the right path. So I have a lot of hope.
Absolutely, and discussions and collaboration, uh, and even, you know, coming together in, in these difficult times. Uh, those don't have to be bad, bad words anymore. Um, thank y'all both for your insight and joining us, of course, at this pivotal moment in Texas education history. Thank you to District 3 State Board of Education member Marissa Perez Diaz and Rosio Ferro Perez, political director with Texas Freedom Network. You can find out more about the Texas Freedom Network at tfn.org. And of course, here at Progress Texas, we're in the business of countering the conservative disinformation machine. But while that machine is funded by oil and tech billionaires, far-right religious nationalists and more, we rely mostly on everyday Texans who value our hard work and share our belief that a Texas that works for everybody is the Texas we want to live in. We don't do subscriptions or paywalls because we believe the message of progress is one that everyone should be able to access, learn from and act upon. So if you've become a regular listener, we could use your support and no amount is too small. Thank you to the Democratic candidate for the Texas Agricultural Commissioner, Clayton Tucker, and State Representative Ana Maria Rodriguez Ramos, as well as a lot of listeners just like you. Thank you all for joining the team. Please go to progressTexas.org/donate to join them. And from everyone at Progress Texas, thank you for tuning in and see y'all next time.
The Progress Texas Happy Hour is a production of Progress Texas, a rapid-response media organization promoting progressive messages and actions. Find us online at progressTexas.org and on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and YouTube. The podcast is produced by me, Chris Mosher, and our featured music is by Walker Lukens. Please be sure and subscribe to the Progress Texas Happy Hour on the podcast platform of your choice. Take a moment to leave us a review if you've enjoyed the show and be sure and tell your friends about us. Thanks for listening and for all you do to press progress forward here in the Lone Star State. We'll see you again next week.